We are now recording Les, you can begin. I will mute myself.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll open this meeting of the Hampton School Board at 4:15. And Superintendent Dr. Costa has a flag, and so we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
With Dan. With liberty and justice for all. So we've just found out how hard that is to do. If board members have any updates from committee reports, I'll go through them very quickly, and if people have any updates, I don't think people have much. Budget, Jenny, anything on budget committee?
No.
You're muted. Oh, no, you're not. I get it. Okay. Wellness, Andrea?
Nothing.
School Boards Association, I have nothing.
Nothing.
CECO-Studying Collaborative.
Nope.
Nothing. Recreation Department, Andrea?
They're in a holding pattern. But on August 24th, they're going to present their, the survey, the UNH survey that was done to the selectmen in hopes of getting some consideration of the recommendations that were made in that survey. And that's all I have.
What was the date on that?
August 24th, they'll be presenting to the selectmen.
Policy? I don't think there's anything. Andrea?
We have a meeting this Friday. And I have done some research on some of the policies locally as well as nationally regarding the food service accounts and how people either pay or cannot pay or whatever. And so I just, a lot of it is not very different from our policy. So I'll just keep compiling data for that.
Is Mary going to be at that meeting? Mary, board?
We don't have a meeting as yet, but I'll make sure she does.
Thank you, I'll be there whenever needed.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Yeah?
Okay.
PTA, Jenny?
Nope.
PTA, anything?
Nope.
Okay. And curriculum, Andrea?
No, nothing at this point.
Okay. And we waive principals' reports for this meeting. It is summer. But if any principals have anything that they want to bring forward, announcements or anything like that. Jim, do you have anything? You're muted.
Just one announcement on kindergarten registration to the parents and anybody viewing this is that packets are available that we picked up in the main four-year area from 8 to 3 o'clock. Please come in, sign in. It's contactless, you can come in and pick up a packet and drop it off in the four-year self-serve kiosk, so to speak. So please make sure you take advantage of that. Kindergarten enrollment is ongoing right now, so please take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Chadler, you're muted right now, you may need to unmute. Do you have anything for us?
No, no updates at this time, but thank you.
Okay, and Dave, I know, I saw him.
Yeah, I think I'd echo Tim's comment. If you're looking to register a middle school student, grade 6 through 8, you can come to Hampton Academy, the office is open 8 o'clock until 2:30 every day. Or you can call 926-2000 and we'll set you up with a registration appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Lois, do you want to go at this time, or do you want to wait until we go down a little bit in the Washington and the response to the COVID?
Whichever your preference is. We can go now or we can wait.
Okay, well, I thought, how about if we do Mariah first and we go over finances? I know I saw Mariah on here somewhere.
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Mariah, you sent us a lengthy report.
Yes, so we are cleaning up and finishing up fiscal year 1920 prior to audit. So my estimate prior to audit is that we'll have about $200,000 left in the general fund. And then that is the 233,672 that was left of the budget that wasn't spent. Plus the difference of what we estimated revenues compared to what we got. So we received about 48,761 in revenues unexpected. So if you add those up, it comes to 282,433. And then we unfortunately have a deficit in food service that we have to take out of our fund balance, which was $82,546. So that's how we get around the 200. With that said, though, we still in our unreserved fund balance have the 217 transfer of interest from the Hampton Academy project that would be going back in my MS24 to offset taxes for 2021. So we'll have the 200 plus that 217.
So that's almost half a million dollars to offset taxes, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So my only question when I got this report and went through it, I wasn't expecting that we were going to be 82 and 1/2 in the hole. And I'm guessing that's from the summer program?
No, that doesn't even include the summer program. And my guess before the final numbers were, my guestimate on my own was 107. So we did better than my guestimate. But this has a lot to do with, one, we have no revenues coming in other than, right? And we paid for our employees.
Yeah.
We, for the end of June, paid for buses to drop off food, but we stopped that. So for the rest of June, and just the food and stuff that would normal cost for the food service. But a lot of that is salaries.
Sure. Okay. Andrea, I see your hand.
Have we gotten all the money back that we were supposed to get back from the government as far as the CARE and?
Well, we have, so CARES Act is, it's different. It doesn't, it's not for food service. It's, we got $88,000 as CARES money that we now can take and figure out what we need for to run either, if we're in school or remotely, what we need to run our district that would cost us above and beyond our budget. So that's what that fund would be for.
Frank, I see your hand.
Yeah, regarding the CARES Act, basically, the governor stated at today's conference that the CARES Act monies can be used for PPE equipment. Okay? So just, I'm going to put that out on the table.
Good to know. So just for clarification, and I know Mary's here. So Mariah, you and Mary don't think we would have even come close to this 82,000 deficit if school had continued the way it?
In a normal way? No, averagely, it's either break-even or around 20 grand. There's nothing usually ever this deficit. No.
Okay. Frank?
Yeah, I thought we would expect something close to this because of the fact that we ran buses on a limited basis to deliver food. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mariah. We ran the lunching program or feed program, and we extended it on two different occasions. So I think we're, you know, knowing that we were going to adhere to some of these costs. So if we can take that money from that grant that we had, or what was it, Mariah, the 200?
217 from our transfer of interest funds, yeah.
Right, right. I think we should take it from there. And all of us knew that that was going to happen. Because the lunching program wasn't self-sustaining.
Right.
Correct, Mariah?
Correct.
So, and by ending those programs that we did when we took those votes in April and May, you know, we're lucky that it didn't go beyond 82,000.
Exactly. I really, when I was calculating back in May, thought it was going to be about 107. That was my guestimate. But also take it, but also remember, summer program right now that we're doing is not 1920 that we just finished. That all goes in 2021. Just put that in your backburner.
Right. So my thought is, Lois, perhaps you can meet with Mariah and Mary and bring to us a recommendation at the next meeting as how you'd like to handle that 82,000.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Andrea, I see your hand.
No, I'll defer to Jenny.
I didn't see Jenny's hand. Frank, do I see your hand?
Yes, I would just like to reiterate that I think that money should come out of the interest fund. And how soon do you need to pay that bill off?
So really, it's, what normally happens is we take our fund balance and we cover it. So I'm already covering that with my fund balance.
Exactly.
Okay.
So at the end, after the deficit, everything's said and done. We still have 200 in my fund balance with that. And then 217 on top of that for the interest from the academy. So we already have it covered. It's just, how can we control it from now on? Especially depending on which way the circumstances fall for 2021. Now knowing what it looks like, right?
Well, you folks are going to meet and you'll come to us with a recommendation. Because I suspect, I suspect we're going to be meeting before August, second weekend of August. I suspect that, but we'll be talking about that in a little bit. Okay. And so, anything else? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay, Les. Mariah, we're covering for it, right? We're on to 21, 2021.
2021, yes.
So we're all covered, we're not taking any money out of tax pay.
No, we have, we're giving money back. We're giving money back.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when I do my DEWE 25, it's going to look like I'm giving the 200 for our fund balance back in. And then on my MS24, I'm going to tell them that I'm giving them 217 from the interest. So when we do taxes, it's going to look like it's 40, 20-ish to reduce taxes for our new, correct?
Okay.
Les, we also have a question.
So you're looking at recommendations so that this doesn't continue into the next budget season, right?
Yeah.
Because if we go to remote learning, it very well could.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so again, Lois, you guys will meet and bring that forward to us.
Absolutely.
We might, I'm just guessing, we might be meeting again in another couple of weeks. So we could do it then. Okay?
We'll be ready.
Which brings us, Mariah, did you have anything else for us?
No, that was, I was honestly pretty impressed that we did that good. It seems tight. But if you remember correctly, back in December, we really had to put a freeze on the budget. And then COVID happened, and we did save a little bit of money. But then we had, you know, the expenses of trying to get cleaning supplies and such. So at the, at the end of the fiscal year 20, I'm pretty happy how we ended in, hopefully, we can keep it just as clean coming up with all the struggles that are going to face us for 2021. So thank you, thank you everybody for all your help.
Okay, thank you, Mariah.
Thanks.
I guess that brings us to you, Lois. And perhaps, perhaps we could start with the eighth-grade Washington trip situation.
Absolutely. So I'm going to start, and then I'm going to have Mr. O'Connor, if you'd like to jump in. How does that sound?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Mr. O'Connor and I had a couple of conversations with the owners of the tour company. And during our conversations, an agreement was made that they were willing to provide 60% of what the parents had paid on credit cards. And so, so that we could get some money into our parents' hands, they agreed to return 60% of the money. So David, do you want to go ahead and talk a little bit about where that is at and where it's going to fall between now and the end of July?
Sure. So parents, this was going back a couple of weeks ago, the company sent out an email making that offer. About 80 parents have taken advantage of that so far. And they're going to keep, the company is going to keep us up to date on, as more parents do it. We agreed upon July 31st being the last day, you know, make sure that if anybody had gotten a refund, then those records will be transferred to us. And if there was any money left over after July 31st, parents that had not asked for a refund, they'll return that to the school. We've looked at, I know you've talked about increasing the refund to families. At that point, at the end of the month, we could talk about what that looks like. But again, every parent, every family will get 60% of what they paid back. And then we'll move from there with the funds that are left back at Hampton Academy to try to increase that or enhance the refund for families.
So, Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Help us follow out here. Single, one family with one student, what would they have paid total?
Well, and again, it's going to be different for every family because at the timing of this last, it was March. And some families didn't make a final payment. It was broken into by a down payment and then for the payments. So if you paid everything, you would get 60%.
How about if you, a full payment? One family made all the payments, what would they have paid?
Yeah, they would have paid $696, I think.
Okay, so say $700, and they're going to get 60% of that back?
That's right.
Okay.
And then we had talked with the board previously that we have some funds left at school that we didn't send to the company. It was the money that you put aside, the 7,500 for scholarships and families that can't afford it. We hadn't sent that money to them yet. So we still have that at school.
Well, once again, why don't you meet with Lois and Bridget and your advisors and give us a recommendation at our next meeting as to what you'd recommend, and we'll vote on that. Jenny, I see your hand.
Thank you. Every parent got this contract, I believe. And then on this contract on F4.3, it says, "If you decline to, if you decide to decline travel insurance, you agree not to hold Tour DC with us, the tour director, or supplies responsible for any problems, of course, or costs that may have been covered by travel insurance." That is all in there that they signed. So if somebody didn't sign, didn't realize that when they signed it, I'm sorry. But it is in the contract that was given to every parent. The other thing is, how many, how much money do we have, Mr. O'Connor, in that account now?
There's $7,500, Jenny. That was the money that the school board puts aside every year to support families.
What happened to the fundraising money that was given that was already sent to them? Where did that money go?
Well, that's probably part of the 40% that they're keeping.
But that 40, that money was supposed to go to children's accounts, right? That were in that.
And they did. Yeah.
Okay, so you think that's part of the 40%? Do we have a spreadsheet on this trip that lists every child, family going, and what they contributed, and also what they fundraised and what their balances were?
We do, Jenny. We have our own. Rachel Gillis kept meticulous records. And the tour company has shared their spreadsheet.
Okay, so we've got all that information.
We do.
Okay.
And I could give a estimate tonight what that would cost, but I wanted to wait till the end of the month until we know how many families have either got their money or are still waiting. But I will definitely be ready to do that by the August meeting.
Okay, I have asked, and I will put in a 91A request because I have not received it yet, is I want any copies of communication between Hampton Academy and the tour company before the contract went out to the parents. I want any and all. And it's a 91A request that I am asking.
All right, thanks, Les. Jenny, to clarify a couple of things, okay? And for you as well, David. That 40%, okay, is really broken down to everyone who paid into the system. Including, you know, if a child did fundraising, that money was theirs, it went in. They're going to get 60% of whatever they paid back. Am I correct, David?
The fundraising money was separated from the money that parents paid.
Right, right, but it was paid to the tour company, correct?
That's right.
On behalf of a student?
That's right.
All right, so that student during that fundraising should be getting 60% of that back, correct? Okay.
Again, we talked about that. We've had a couple of families that raised almost all, all their money went to fundraising. That's a conversation that I'll have to have with Dr. Costa exactly how we're going to handle that.
Well, we always ask, if you didn't pay any money into it, how would you get money back? You know, that's. Because you put your child in there to earn the money, so you wouldn't have to put the money in. And where is the 60% of that money? That was a question, I guess. Where was, where's that money at?
I'm not really, yeah, not really interested in discussing this two times because I know, I know, well, I know we're going to have to discuss it again. No, we're going to have to discuss it again when they bring us their final recommendation. We're going to have to discuss whether we.
Where's the 60% of the fundraising money that the parents earned? Did it go back to them, or is it sitting in an account at Hampton Academy? What is, where is it?
All fundraising money went directly towards the students' accounts. As soon as they fundraised, that money went into their travel account. That went right to the travel company, Jen.
So where, you returned 60% of that money, which the parents use as their payment for the trip? Where is that 60% of the money?
Well, it's going to be different for everybody, Jenny, depending on how much they paid, how much they fundraised. But we, all I have is $7,500 at Hampton Academy. That's what I can tell you.
So if.
Andrea?
I want to, this is.
All right, Jenny, go ahead and answer.
Because we're playing with people's money that, we're not playing, but we're, people in earnest made sure their children fundraised and raised most of their money for their trip. They're getting, the people who wrote checks are getting 60% back. The people who did 90% fundraising, we don't know where their 60% is. Where is it? It's at the tour company. So are we getting that part of that 60% back? We don't know. Right? Or does somebody know if we're getting it back?
Jenny, I do know there are certain laws around getting fundraising money and giving fundraising money back. I would probably defer to Mariah to explain that. But we would have to, we couldn't return it to the family. We would have to return it to the person who bought the raffle ticket. Or the person who bought, you know, the basket or things like that. It doesn't go back to the family, it goes to the person who originated the money. That would be, that's a difficult thing to do. But Mariah, is there anything you can share, add to this?
So my suggestion on an audit stance to that is that money should, we have to, one, prove that the money got sent to the company and that how much exactly was fundraising money. And that we're getting that 60% back to us. And then we have a few options, right? We can leave it in eighth-grade fundraising student activities fund for another trip. Or we can, it can follow them and go into student activities at Winnicott. But there's no, we can't give it to the student that raised the money because it wasn't their money to begin with. It could have been mine, it could have been yours, it could have been anybody's, and we have no proof of that. So it's considered student activity funds. And then it's just trying to figure out where that fund wants to go to. You want to leave it in eighth-grade student activity fund? Or do we want to send it to Winnicott so it follows those kids? If they have funds at Winnicott, I don't know. But, I mean, those would be the main two options.
Well, the other option is to give it back to the families. And that would be my preference. But we don't know how much that's going to be, Jenny, until the 31st.
But the families that have paid it is what Mariah is saying. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mariah. You can't give it back to the families because the families didn't pay for it, right?
Families didn't pay for it.
That's right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mariah, but if it goes into the students' activities accounts, we can then give it back generally to the students. If we said, let's say there's $500, we can't do that.
I don't believe so, no, we can't.
No, because it's not.
I'm sorry, Jenny, that's even worse than I thought.
It's not an activity. It's not, it's not what it's, yeah. I mean, you could do something for eighth grade, like if you know how you guys did eighth-grade pitchers or whatever, that money could have been used for some of that stuff since it was for them. But, yeah, you have to have checks and balances, and there's no real check and balance for a reason to give that fundraising money to Joe Smo for no reason other than they were going to go on a trip and they couldn't go. Yep.
Andrea?
It might be advisable if David could come and his team could come up with a list of the students, student X, student Y, student Z, and how much they made in fundraising. And perhaps at least, if we knew how much each student made in fundraising, that might.
I'd be glad to hear that.
Save somebody's, you know, people's fears or whatever.
We have that record, Andrea.
Okay, so that spreadsheet should go with, to Jenny with all the other spreadsheets you're going to send her.
I'm not, I can do that. I'll send it to the superintendent and I'll let superintendent do that.
Okay.
Okay, well, you've heard Jenny's concerns. You've heard Mariah's concerns. And we expect to hear from you probably in a couple of weeks. Okay. Lois, probably the topic of the day, which is the response to the COVID-19 coronavirus. Laura is yours.
Thank you, thank you very much. So you may recall from our meeting in June, we had an opportunity to provide you with an overview of our roadmap to return to school. And tonight, we want to take this opportunity to do a couple of things. One, we want to talk about the roadmap more with specific information and details. And second, we would also like to share with you the results from the survey that the community participated in from July 1st to July 10. So I'm going to begin with the roadmap. But before I do, I think I want to just briefly begin by saying that my biggest responsibility as a school administrator is ensuring the safety and well-being of our staff and students. And as a superintendent, it is even more paramount, given COVID-19, that we are ensuring the safety of our staff and our students. So this is hugely important. The governor. So this is, this is hugely important. Um, the governor just finished his conversation with WMUR just prior to our meeting, and he has talked a lot about, um, the state guidelines. So you will see with our document that we are also considering the guidelines from the state. We had anticipated some of what he said, and that's been built into our guidelines as well. And we're gonna talk about the fact that we know that right now, the numbers in New Hampshire and on the seacoast are really good. In fact, by comparison to the rest of the nation, they're excellent. But we know we're a long way between now and September first, which is the first day of school for students. And we know that a lot can happen between now and then. And the governor was quick to note that we, we could have a surge, we don't know, um, and this is very unpredictable. He seemed very, um, pleased with where we were as a state, and he attributes that to what we're doing. So what we're doing is working. So that was very encouraging. So with that being said, we know that there are five areas to our roadmap. And we are thinking about returning to school as safely as we can. We're also thinking about the fact that we need to be flexible in case we had to pivot or move into a remote learning situation. We also recognize that hybrid models do exist where some students may not be able to return to school, some staff may not be able to return to school for different medical reasons and otherwise, and so we might be in hybrid for that, for that reason alone. Also know that there is a fourth possibility where we could be in what we call rolling admissions, where, depending on what was happening with COVID- nineteen in our geographic location, could determine what happens with our students in school. We are looking at specifically five different areas with this roadmap. We're looking at curriculum and instruction. We're looking at staff and student wellness. Also looking at our technology. We're looking at our facilities, and we're looking at our operations. I'm going to give, um, my leadership team an opportunity to talk about these areas, and then we're going to share the data, and then we can decide how we want to do questions. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to the building principals to talk about curriculum and instruction.
Thank you, Lois. I'll, I'll get started. Again, this is Tim, principal at Center School. Nathan Sallow, principal at Marston School, and David O'Connor, principal at Hampton Academy, will be speaking as well on the area of curriculum instruction. Thank you, Lois, um, for that great introduction about where we're heading. The goal is being how safely we can enter the school and be part of a school again. Uh, so there are multiple scenarios. The first scenario that I'll talk about is if we are returning to school, which we're hopeful to return to the old brick and mortar, uh, school setting where we are actively now entering the school and what that would look like as far as curriculum and instruction. Uh, Nathan will, will follow up with a little bit in case we need to move to remote, and the successes we had is remote, as just a little bit of follow-up. And then David will talk about if we have to have any hybrid or any follow-up questions. So with that being said, the goal of the return to instruction subcommittee uh, throughout the late spring and now into the summer has always been to develop these guidelines and recommendations uh, that we're presenting tonight to ensure that every student is on track for a successful academic and social return. And emotionally as well. And it's not now. We have to be very realistic. We're hopeful that, uh, this is by the end of twenty twenty-two. So again, we have to really take our time and work to find out where they are, not only academically, but where they are social and emotional as well. With that being said, we will be assessing students' learning progress and loss when students return to school. Uh, that's, that will include multiple forms of assessment, baseline assessments, so to speak, that will identify where we are and the most valuable, uh, vulnerable students in an effort to recognize and prioritize their needs. We will ensure that schools and teachers are engaging in intentional curriculum planning and documentation, in lesson planning, in best instructional practices to ensure continuity and instruction during all possible learning scenarios. And we'll plan, and we are planning restorative supports and professional learning offerings for teachers around the COVID- nineteen trauma, equity, implicit bias, social emotional learning, inclusion, appropriate use of digital and online learning, and also culturally responsive teaching. More specifically, our recommendations include, uh, these multiple forms of assessments to determine students' social emotional and academic learning progress and possible loss over the last trimester. Again, we were out a whole trimester, so we need to be, um, we need to try to develop that baseline. This is not going to be done. If we return to school, this will not be done in the first week of school. This is to be done hopefully in October in an effort to provide teachers and students with time to build community and relationships and focus on these SEL needs. We will ensure a strong RTI, that's response to the instruction model, to support all students by utilizing staff in creative ways. We must think outside the box and be creative to support these struggling students. We need to provide more opportunities for small group instruction and one-to-one supports, so that is going to be critical. I am not doing that on the screen. Here we go. Okay. Uh, identify, um, it's really important because we need to condense a little bit curriculum. Uh, we can't start off where we normally would start off, so we have to identify what is essential and these essential standards that are critical to student success at each grade level. Uh, that's done through continued professional development that we had at the end of last year, and we're gonna have to continue that, as the governor even said, at the beginning of the school year before students arrived. That has to be critical. We're gonna determine standards and content that wasn't covered as deeply as typically had done in previous grade levels and now provide modifications to the curriculum accordingly. We're gonna provide the staff with equitable guidelines and expectations for instruction and all learning. We're going to utilize instructional practices that provide consistent, timely feedback to guide student learning and to ensure student progress. Every child will have an opportunity to learn from where they are. It's called differentiated instruction. That must occur. Teachers need to really, really focus on understanding there'll be a wide range of abilities in the classroom as they move forward. With all of that done, we're going to then in the fall have to take a look at possibly modifying our current grading and reporting system because the standards won't align as we traditionally have aligned, so we're gonna have to take a strong look at that to, and also try to provide more meaningful feedback to parents and students. We're gonna have to provide training, both teacher and parent training for the use of all digital platforms or online. We're gonna have to provide parents for a platform to easily access, um, online and digital tools. We're going to have to provide staff with time. Time for collaboration, time to ensure instructional continuity across grade levels, and time to consult for supporting specific student needs. So additional time is gonna be critical as we move into the structure of a school next year, or actually in seven weeks. And provide professional development. Professional development is gonna be critical, uh, in the area of SEL, technology, continually understanding Google, even if we start off brick and mortar, we need to prepare with Google classrooms and setting up those classrooms for, in a moment's notice, we may have to shift because of a situation. We have to be flexible. We may have to shift to remote. And we may have to shift back to brick and mortar. So we need to have that all done and front-loaded ahead of time, so we have that online capability ready to go, computers ready to go, that platform ready to go, so that we are prepared and we are ready for any situation that would occur. It could happen class by class if there's an outbreak. It doesn't even have to be by school, um, if there is something that occurs, so we need to be ready. Um, and that professional development, uh, continues on for safety care, especially in all the protocols uh, with the COVID- nineteen, and all about, uh, best instructional practices for online and also brick and mortar instruction. So that's where we are. A little bit more emphasis I put on for returning to school, as Lois said, that's our best effort if we can return safely. Nathan, I'm gonna turn it over to you to talk about a little bit of our successes with remote and what we would need to do, or how it went and how, how it could possibly look moving forward in the fall.
Thank you. So the, the positive thing, at, at least for staff, which will trigger that to students, is many of the things we're planning or preparing to do for brick and mortar will also do whether, in a remote setting. So the, the assessments, the screening, the progress monitoring, the professional development. We're fortunate. We did have thirteen weeks of, of remote learning to learn from. Um, you know, we were learning as we go. It wasn't something anyone was prepared for, but our staff, um, you know, adapted quite quickly to the remote learning environment and helped the students adapt to it. So we were able to take time in June and throughout the summer as we worked to really reflect on what went well and how can we build upon that, and then what areas do we need to improve. Um, using some survey data and some informal observational data from teachers, um, it really helps us to take a look at what do the kids need, what do the families need, and of course, what does the staff need in order to make this successful? Should we have to transition into a remote learning environment again? Um, as Mr. Lannan said, professional development's going to be key, um, in utilizing the remote or virtual learning environment, not just for staff, but also for parents and students. And we wanna make it so that, um, technology is not just available for our students and staff, but, um, you know, a process for exchanging in terms of repairs is established as it was in the spring, and that we're able to provide troubleshooting and support to families so they can in turn support their students. Um, we also looked really hard in this subcommittee at balancing the screen time between paper and pencil work. We know that students, especially, you know, in the lower elementary school and upper elementary, you know, a lot of kids are really craving having that paper, having that pencil, um, taking a break from the computer. We know for their own well-being that that's going to be essential, so we are looking at how do we balance the amount of time students are interacting face-to-face with the teacher and how much are they working independently and setting up a distribution model where we can safely collect work in order to, um, have some, you know, valid assessment data and, and student work samples for our reporting systems, but also providing students with the materials that they're gonna need to successfully participate and make sure everyone has at home what they might need in school. Um, you know, the goal, whether we're remote or in brick and mortar, always at our schools, is to deliver high-quality instruction and, and support our kids um, academically and socially emotionally. When we looked at this, whether we're online or we're brick and mortar, we know that as a, you know, instruction subcommittee, we need to look at academics and student achievement, but more importantly, we need to make sure kids are feeling safe and comfortable when they come to school in any sort of setting, um, so that they can be successful. So, uh, we're, we're planning for, for any and all circumstances, and I think we're able to build off last spring and really learn a lot from that through reflection and, and make it better for ourselves and, and for our students and our staff and families coming up in the fall or winter. Thank you.
Uh, I just wanna thank all those people in the subcommittees. This was not, you know, one person. Our, our committee, the curriculum instruction committee, um, we had Michelle Witt, who, um, who's since left us, but I wanted to make sure that I recognized Michelle. She did some great work on this committee. You know, it's, it's all scenarios. We, we don't know what it's gonna look like, so we have to prepare for everything. And again, I think Dr. Costa referred to the rolling admission. We may be in school, but then we have to be out, and then we come back in. And again, making sure there's continuity and consistency between brick and mortar, remote, and then in and out. That's gonna be the challenge for every, every teacher, every parent, every administrator, um, to make sure that, that we deliver high-quality instruction and that kids are feeling comfortable and they get what they need. That may look different at every school because developmentally, you've got, you know, you've got preschoolers and kindergartners, and you've got seventh and eighth graders, and although they're still kids, developmentally, they have different needs and different wants. So within, within that plan, we've got, we've tried to make account and really tried to differentiate because those developmental needs are real important. Again, my hope is that we're brick and mortar and, um, and I'm gonna cross my fingers and, and cross everything else, and hopefully that's what we'll be in September first.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I think we should present our whole plan and then go from there, or what's your preference?
Are, are you asking me?
I am, or anyone, yes.
Present the plan.
I, I think I would go through the plan.
Okay, that's my plan. All right, good. I just wanted to, so I'm gonna move on then. Thank you, um, to the principals for doing that and providing that overview. I appreciate it. We're gonna move on to student and staff wellness. Um, Dr. Lois DeSilva-Naptin is going to talk about that. And our goal being to ensure the safety and well-being of our students and staff, again, our greatest responsibility.
Okay, hello. So I just wanna start by saying this is my tenth day in the district, so I'm so happy to be here. Um, I wasn't on this committee, but I am going to present the information from the committee. Uh, they did work very hard. So, um, we do know that relationships are at the center of student success. And we also know that this pandemic has put a huge strain on many of our relationships. In addition, we know how important it is to address this void. So our roadmap includes two focal areas for wellness. One, uh, for the students and one, um, group of strategies for the staff. So for the students, we want to initiate a district-wide mentoring program. Um, and we will continue to work on the details out as to how to best implement this, whether we are in person, you know, brick and mortar, or engaging in the virtual schooling or remote schooling or some sense of a hybrid. But this mentoring program, um, will go on either way. And it will promote student and staff connections, a safe place for students to share their needs, and it will also improve relationships all around. So that piece of well-being for the students is, is so, so important. There's lots of things that people wanna share about, we've been away for a long time, so when we get back together again, what kinds of things are on their mind? That's what this is gonna be. It's gonna be a, an informal mentoring situation, two to three times a week for groups of ten to twelve students, where they can stay in a consistent group, um, build those connections, and be able to share, um, whatever they want to share. It'll be in a safe setting. In addition to the mentoring program, we also want to promote open-air classes. If we are back in brick and mortar, we wanna encourage that, as well as, um, setting up some parent support and training regarding the social emotional wellness of the students. The second focal area is for the staff. So we know that we are all in a helping profession, and this can certainly take a toll on us. So for the staff, we will provide an opportunity for self-assessment so they can address their compassion satisfaction as well as a possible burnout risk. Uh, this will be addressed through a, a, a survey. It's called the Professional Quality of Life Scale Voluntary, and survey, and it is voluntary. Um, and the staff can take the survey and they can give themselves their, their own, they can scale it themselves, score it themselves. They come up with certain categories. And it's, it's a research-based survey put out by Hundle-Stam. It will help the teachers kind of assess where they're, where they are standing mentally. This has been very challenging, you know, don't, some teachers were homeschooling their own kids, working their own school system, and also trying to do the remote learning. I mean, who knows what they were doing, all kinds of things. Essential workers were working and kids in childcare. It was very challenging for everyone. So after they take this voluntary survey, we would, um, then follow up with focus groups to take a deeper dive into the topics with the staff members who want to share their insights regarding, um, their social emotional well-being during this outage. That's the crux of our two focal areas. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I'm Dr. DeSilva-Naptin. I appreciate you stepping in, and I know that you've spent some time reviewing that survey, so I appreciate you doing that. And we know that we would be working collaboratively with our team of school counselors, psychologists to, to make sure that this happens, along with obviously our building leaders. So thank you for, for taking the lead on this on your tenth day. So, moving on, Greg, would you be so kind as to talk about technology? We know that the role of technology is going to be huge, particularly, uh, for remote, but also for when kids are in brick and mortar.
Yes, great, thank you. Um, we were already in a great place when it came to technology before COVID- nineteen hit, and I would like to give a thanks to the, the school board and the community for having that support and belief in technology being able to change the way teachers teach and the way students learn. So we were already one-to-one grades three to eight before this hit, and we were about two-to-one in grades K to two. And, uh, once this, uh, COVID hit, we were asking people to use their own devices to help supplement where we were short in the K to two grades. Uh, so we realized that became part of a problem with helping to support, uh, parents when there were problems with those devices. So, uh, it was decided that we would, uh, finish implementing one-to-one over the summer, so, but hopefully by the time school starts, and I know that it's, uh, you know, a lot of people looking to get technology right now, so I've been.
So I've been assured by my sales rep that we will have them in place by beginning September. But we're hoping to have one-to-one for every child in kindergarten through eighth grade, where that child will go home with a personally-assigned device with their name on it for the year, beginning in September. So regardless of what environment we're in, they will have a device assigned to them. So if at a moment's notice, we have to go back to the remote environment, they can take that device home with them and use it there. We are looking at providing things such as training for teachers to help support in the use of things like their learning management system, whether it's Google Classroom or CSO. We're looking at providing additional resources when it comes to software. So we've talked with the staff and we're looking at ways to fund those additional software resources that they will need. We're looking at any additional hardware that may be needed and try and purchase when needed hardware for teachers if they go into that remote environment. And we're looking at looking at different options provided by the state as well in forms of LMS or Google Hangouts Meet. So this is free right now, but we're looking at purchasing into meets so that we can do this video conferencing continuing into the fall regardless of the environment. So that covers pretty much where we are with the technology. We're in a pretty good place, I think, to be prepared either way to help teach with this technology in the new environment.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you very much. Appreciate that overview. Keith Lassard, you'd be so kind as to talk about facilities. We know these next two areas, we are going to probably dive a little more deeper and then I anticipate there may be some questions. But Keith is going to talk about facilities specifically. How are we going to create a safe learning environment for our students and staff following CDC guidelines, state and federal recommendations? So Keith, if you would.
Good evening, everyone. Well, I'd like to, I'm going to repeat maybe a little bit what Lois just said, but we're going to continue to watch for further guidance and recommendations from the New Hampshire DOE, Governor, CDC, and Hampton School District. There are going to be physical plant improvements, signage regarding COVID-19 awareness, samples are hand washing, social distancing, et cetera. Plexiglass and air is building of high-traffic front offices, special education, et cetera. Touch-free faucets in the restroom. Provide hand sanitizer in all rooms without sinks. Hand-free dispensers, paper towels disposable... I'm going to start over. Good evening, everyone. Hand-free disposable towel dispensers. Our bench strategies are open windows, set classroom ventilators to increase outside air introduction into the center Mars can use unit ventilators using pleated MERV eight filters. Hampton Academy HVAC system will have inline air line purification, inline. I hate reading out loud. On the stairways and hallway doors, fire holes will be installed. This reduces the need to physically open and close the doors. We will continue ongoing training of the custodial staff on the evolving protocols of COVID-19 cleaning practices. Adding new tools and increasing the frequency of cleaning. We will be implementing new cleaning equipment, increasing efficacy of cleaning. How to use an electronic static spraying to the cleaning routine. Continue to use hospital-grade disinfectants. Increase daytime disinfecting of high-traffic areas, restroom, stairways, door entrances. Start twice a day trash removal from classrooms, adjacent spaces more if necessary as lunches are planned to be served in classrooms. Continue to provide suitable cleaning supplies. An example of that would be disinfectant wipes. For the staff, I want to provide appropriate personal protective equipment to the custodial staff. Face shields, face masks, aprons and gowns, gloves, et cetera. Our goal is to provide for individual safety for facility occupants and the users in the And with all that said, I mean, just running down this list, it doesn't sound like much, but I got to thank my facilities committee. This has been one of the most evolving areas. I know all areas are very important. But there's just so much goes into all of it. So thank you.
Thank you, Keith. I appreciate it. And I know how seriously you take your job and I know how important this is to you. So thank you, thank you. Really appreciate it. And staying on top of those, the state documents as well as CDC documents, Department of Health documents, the Harvard documents and all the other documents that I continue to send you. So thank you very much. I do appreciate that. Yeah. So as we continue on in the plan, I want to talk about operations. And again, this is about providing safe and orderly guidelines that are going to support our students and their staff and their safe return to school. Obviously, we continue to work with our outside and supporting partners, Hampton Rec and the YMCA Schools Out. And I can tell you that we have been in contact with Renee Boudreaux from Hampton Rec, Jake Sidney from the YMCA Schools Out Program. And so they've been regularly involved with our meetings. I can tell you that I continue to work with Stephanie Morris from First Student. In fact, we're going to talk about ridership in just a bit as you start to see those preliminary numbers around how many students are requesting transportation. We're going to talk about that. And Stacy Morris has assured me that all of her drivers will be trained regarding CDC and state regulations, rules around sanitization. We will be working together, particularly, we may be redesigning bus routes. We will obviously need hard numbers around ridership, given social distancing and parent input. We know that the CDC guidelines initially and has really held fast to six feet. We know though, that if you listen to the governor just now, he talked about three to six feet. We, as a community, have to have a conversation about that. The other recommendations that come from that is that if students are going to be not able to socially distance, now are we defining it at three feet or six feet? It's recommended that anyone over two years old wear a cloth mask. That's right off the CDC guidelines today, was looking at. So you can see that if we are not going to keep kids six feet apart on the bus, it does require, it is recommended that they wear cloth masks. So these are things that we are going to have to discuss as a community and come to consensus as a community. I can also tell you that another piece of this is facilities, but Keith has gone into great depth on that, but that is also part of operations. But Keith has gone into great depth. Food service is also part of operations and Mary Borg, who I blew, is on with us. We talked to her about specifically around breakfast and lunch, and what does that look like? We know school is not going to look the same in brick and mortar because large groups of students cannot have lunch together. It means lunch happens in a classroom. It means that we're probably doing bag lunches. It means breakfast could be a grab-and-go. Things are going to look differently. So working with Mary Borg on that, and if you have specific questions, I know she is here online. And then finally, we're talking about athletics and students' strong desire to return to sports. And obviously, thinking about all that entails in terms of PPE for sports, supervision for sports, transportation concerns, how do the students get changed for sports? We talked about remote sign-ups. We talked about how might we use our nurses? We were hoping to have clearer guidelines from the state. Unfortunately, they have backed off. They are making no recommendations and they are giving us local control over that. I want to ensure you that I am working with the Southeasters Superintendent's Group. We meet every other week. We met last Thursday. We'll meet a week from this Thursday to kind of get a sense of where other superintendents are regarding sports. Also, we are listening to the commissioner on Wednesday. We are trying to stay on top of that, just to get a sense of where schools are with that. But I can tell you that there is great concerns about fall sports, given the contact involved and how we could ensure social distancing. What has become very clear is probably three things. One is that we have to ensure social distancing. And we have to decide how we want to define that, whether it be six feet or three feet. Two, we know that masks are important, even for anyone over two years. It's right there on the CDC front page. Three, sanitization and hand washing hygiene is huge. We have to be role models for this. We have to encourage this. So hand sanitization, hand washing is all important. So these are the things that are really clear to us right now. What I want to do is I want to share with you some input that we've received from our community. We ran a survey from July 1st to July 10th to ask our community how they were feeling. And we know that things change, but this is how they were feeling. And I have to tell you, we had a tremendous response. We had about 1,100 parents. We had about, I think we had around over 800. Correct me if I'm wrong, Greg.
You had 930, well, response representing 930 children.
Right. So basically, out of 1,100 students, we had 930. So you can see that we had a huge participation rate. And I want to thank the families for taking the time out to do that. I'd like to go ahead and share some of those results, if that's okay, unless you want to talk about the back-to-school roadmap. Do you want to hear it all first and then have conversations, or what's your preference?
I think you can just continue, Lois.
All right, great. So Greg, will you show that first slide that we have, that pie graph, that we asked our families, would you send your child back to school in the fall? So Greg is going to share with you and our viewers and community what that slide looks like. So we're going to share this with you and I'll talk us through it because I know it's hard to read. So if you look at it, you can see in the green, which is the largest section, we had about 579 or 62% who said that they would send their child back to school. We had about 288 or 31%, that's the yellow, that might send their child back to school. And we had 62 or 6.7% of our families, that's in red, that said they would not send their child back to school. Thank you, Greg. All right. And then if you go to this next page or this next slide, Slide 2, you can get a breakdown to see the grade levels in terms of where they fell. And this starts at pre-K and goes all the way through eighth grade. And you can get a sense that you can see at center school, we had, you know, most, we had a large amount of green, which tells us that most families would send their children back to school. You can see though, if you're looking at the red, those are the families that do not feel comfortable sending their child back to school. You can see that as we get up into the middle school and even in fifth grade, the numbers get a little bit greater. So at center school, you had a total of 14. At Marsden, you had 16. But at the middle school, you had 31. So that kind of tells you the older they get, the more resistant parents were to send students back to school. And then if we go to the next slide, which talks about the conditions needed to return to school. So this is what we asked families, what would be important for us to consider? And if you go to the biggest area, you'll see that daily cleaning is huge. So facilities and cleaning is really important to families. You also notice that hand sanitizing station is equally important. That's about, they're both about 18%. You also see that the hand washing, the hygiene that I spoke of, was about 15%. And then following was temperature checks. That was important to about 12% of our families. So you get a sense of that. Interestingly enough, only 5% of our families felt like face coverings were recommended. So that's something that we as a community would have to talk about, given CDC recommendations. Thank you, Greg. Can you go to the next slide? And again, this slide here breaks it down by schools. Center is in green, Marsden is in yellow, and Hampton Academy is in red. And you can see where those numbers fall based on the ages of those students. Something for us to be considering, right? I think that we all can agree that the cleaning, the hand washing breaks is hugely important to families. Let's go on to the next slide. This next slide talks about a hybrid model. A hybrid model is a combination of students in school and any combination of students who would be remote learning. And you can see that it's really, it's a pie chart, it looks like a third, right? But you can see that by a small percentage, 38% are not in favor of a hybrid model. But it's a very slim margin. 35% were possibly considering it. And only 26%, 25.9, said yes, they're interested. But if we go to the next slide, I think we get a little more insight. So if we go to the next slide, you can see, again, center school is saying no. You can see it's a stronger feeling of no as at Marsden. And I'm going to guess that this has to do with daycare. That's going to come up later in our data. But you can see this is a breakdown by the different schools. And then if you go to the next slide, it talks about bus transportation. And you can see that we've asked, are you planning to utilize bus transportation? If we combine those students who do not access bus transportation with those who would not utilize bus transportation, it puts us at about 37% because there's 11% that do not and 26% that would not. So some don't access it and some wouldn't. So that's at about 36%, leaving us at about a 66% ridership. You have 32 that would and 30% that might. And you can see that's a big number, right? So we're anywhere from about 36 to 62%. So we really need to dive a little bit deeper into those numbers to get some hard numbers so that if we have to look at bus routes, we know where we're sending our buses. And if you go to the next slide, again, we break it down by the different the different schools. So you can see where Center, Marsden, and Hampton Academy. And then finally, the last slide, which is the barriers to remote learning. And again, the biggest barrier is around childcare. Kind of getting at what Dr. DeSilva-Naptin talked about is that our families are trying to work and they are, you know, they're very busy. And on top of that, they're concerned about childcare with this remote learning. And so that is at almost 39%. You also had 35.5% that said that there weren't any barriers at this time. And then you have another larger barrier at about 17% where there was concern around lack of a quiet working space. And then if you go to that last slide here, you can break it down by the different schools. And if you look, you'll see that childcare is a significant problem for obviously our younger students, Center and Marsden. You can see those numbers. And you can see Hampton Academy has fewer barriers, right? As you look at those red lines. So this provides with our first look at this data from our community. And again, I want to thank our families for responding and we do appreciate that. And what I'd like to do at this time, now that you've heard from us, is I'd like to open it up with your questions. I think I've given you I think you have, I've given you a lot to talk. Frank?
Frank? Lois, as you know, the state, as of today, put out the suggested guidelines. And I would make a recommendation that we get that out to every household in Hampton that has kids attending one of the three schools. That I would recommend. Second, according to the CDC guidelines, and it hasn't changed, is they're recommending three things, as you mentioned. Masks, social distancing, six feet, and hand washing. I know the governor today also stated in regards to sports that we should maintain, or his recommendation was a three to six feet social distancing on the sports end of it. And I can't see how you're going to do that with wrestling, basketball, and track and any of the other fall sports. So I would probably make a recommendation that we look at suspending sports until the spring. Based on, I don't see how you can get a social distancing and the mask recommendation. But having said that, the state basically put the emphasis back on the districts. They just gave us guidelines. They made the emphasis there. But one of the key takeaways from that is the districts can mandate masks. So I want that to be looked at as well. I don't know how that's going to work with preschool and grades K through 2, but I do know that staff, we can mandate that. Also, they also made recommendations on people coming into the school buildings. Okay, that should be put at a limit and leave control. And the other thing that came out of that, which I'd like to discuss later, is the new SAU and the entryway. So can we take that up after this, Les?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So if I can, if I can jump in, I think a decision that we should really think about is a date for making a decision. Because I'm sure the principals want to know, and I'm sure the parents want to know. And I don't think now or tonight is the time to make that decision. So if I may, we could have a board meeting on the 28th of July, which is two weeks from now. And the emphasis of that board meeting would be to discuss how we're going to reopen, whether there's going to be a mask requirement, fall sports, social distancing, et cetera, et cetera. That's what that meeting would be for. I'm throwing out the 28th, or if you think you need a little bit more time, I think we could push it back to August 4th. So I'm going to ask the superintendent, well, first of all, I should ask board members. Are board members available on those nights? Ginny, would you be available? Ginny?
Yep.
Andrea, are you available?
Yes.
Pepper, I don't, Pepper, yes, I'm available. Frank, are you available?
That's questionable. That's questionable, Les. My stepdaughter's having a baby in Philadelphia, but I can be available remote if we don't have the meeting live, okay? But I would like to say, I would probably recommend the 4th, only because it would give Lois enough time to get those packets out to the parents.
So now, Lois, we have two dates that people are available. It's kind of your call. What, which one would you like?
You know,
Lois, the 4th of the July 28th?
I'd say let's go with August 4th. But I'm going to be really honest with you. We, numbers could look really good. I just had a conversation with Jamie Sullivan, and we talked about numbers. August, August 4th could look really good, and September 1 could look really different. I think the words I heard very clearly from the commissioner, the governor, is flexibility in being nimble and being ready to pivot. But I'm certainly ready on August 4th to have a conversation to say where we're moving. Definitely. So definitely, yeah, I can be ready whenever you want. August 4th is great, but I think we also have to be ready to respond.
Sure, sure. But, but I don't think much beyond August 4th before we sort of make some decisions these, these areas. Okay? Andrea, and Ginny after.
Well, as you, as you showed, as you clearly showed by the graphs that you put up, that childcare is going to be one of the major things that people are going to have to deal with. I was wondering if we could at least say by the end of the month that we're going back to brick and mortar. Not, we don't have to be specific about how we're doing it, but I think parents are going to need to be able to start setting up their daycare scenario. So if we can at least say by the end of the month, look, we're all going back to school. How it's going to look and how we're going to do it may be different. But at least that way, they can start getting their daycare lined up. That's all I have to say, all I have to say.
Ginny?
I echo that, Andrea. Right now, every childcare center has been cut out in how many kids they have. They are also running on lower budgets. They've already, most of them are pretty well accepted for the fall. And I know I'm getting calls daily, and I can't take anymore at this point. But I think you're going to find that everywhere, and there's not a lot of options in Hampton. So I think if you're doing something that requires childcare, we need to know sooner rather than later.
So, so I'm, I'm kind of hearing July 28th would be a better date for a meeting.
I think we've got to let parents know as soon as they can.
Okay. Lois, can you make that work, July 28th?
Yes, I can.
Okay. We'll be making some very big decisions on July 28th. Andrea?
If, yeah, if there's, like I said, if we even need to meet both July 28th and August 4th, at least let parents know by July 28th if it's brick and mortar and in full tilt, not a hybrid at this point. Then give them the rest of the details August 4th. But we really, really need to let them know. Probably even yesterday. I mean, they're in, they're in, you know, it's going to be tough.
Lois?
Can I, can I just, yeah, you know, it's interesting. So I spent some time on the beach this past weekend, and I ran into a lot of students and a lot of families and had a lot of conversations. And it is, it is the most important question on everybody's mind. And, and what I told them is this, and this is how I feel. I, I feel that if the numbers are what they are today, I have, we have no problem opening, right? If our numbers continue to be as low as they are today, I think we're, we open and we try. And we try to get in some time with kids within school. It's only if we have a downward turn or a surge, like we've seen in other states, that we do get concerned. So I think, you know, my feeling is, is that I will, we will do everything. And I know the leadership team will do everything we can to get our children back to school pending a surge that would, you know, would potentially be more harmful, right? Than, than not having them in school. So but I defer to you. We can wait till July 28th. But that's really the conversation that we had.
So I'm going to make a motion now that our next board meeting be a virtual meeting on July 28th at 4 o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, Ginny? Seconded by Ginny. Further discussion? All those in favor? Frank?
Aye.
Andrea? Andrea? Ginny?
She muted.
Oh, okay, but she raised her hand. And Pepper, I can't see you. Pepper? Okay, well, I'll have her abstain for now. Oh, Ginny, question?
Yeah, on our, on your graphic, it shows that 17% of our staff would not return. So what are we doing for that? The other thing is, in the new regulations that we have with transportation and distancing, how much more a bus is going to cost us? I mean, if we have to add extra buses and things, because this is going to be a tight budget time come November, December, and January. So we've got to figure out all of this and how to do it. And we haven't even began to.
Andrea?
So, so that's, so those are the, so those are the things that Lois is going to have to look into and bring back to us hopefully on July 28th. Because, yeah, we're going to have to look at maybe more custodial staff. We didn't even address the fact about temperature checks. And of course, we do need to, you're right, we need to talk about students who will need remote learning, as well as teachers who may need to remotely teach. And so those are some things that she'll bring back on the 28th to us.
Right.
Frank?
Yeah, the other, the other thing I wanted to bring up is if we do go back to brick and mortar, okay, I think we need to have a concern of if anyone does contact with COVID-19 and brings it into the school. Because a number of cases nationwide, that has been the issue. Where, you know, a teenager goes to a party, comes back, the entire family is testing positive for COVID-19. So I, I think we need to look at that as well, okay? Because everyone's health is the primary concern here.
And I think, I think there's a couple hundred things that we really need to think about that we probably don't even know that we need to think about yet. Because it seems like every time we solve one issue, two or three others surface. So, you know, I have confidence in our administrators that they certainly will solve and meet these challenges. So, so you know where we're going, Lois, for July 28th? And I know we have a lot of parents, I see it like 103, but I'd just like to finish a couple items of business before I open it up to public comment. So Lois, you had some nominations?
Correct. We do. So we have two positions that we want to nominate this evening. We have a special ed case manager, Diane Nacain, we'd like to nominate this evening.
I'll make the motion, we accept the nomination.
I would happily second that. Okay, Ginny, second. Moved Frank, second to Ginny. All those in favor? Maybe show hands will be easier. Okay, I got, Ed Pepper, hi. So we have 5-0-0.
Great, great. I'm sure you saw how qualified and talented she is. So we're happy to bring her aboard. And then the second nomination I have for you this evening is our school psychologist, who would be replacing Harry Costello, a nationally certified in school psychology. Again, these, these are dynamic people that bring a great background experience that I think we're going to have great need for. So.
I'll make the motion, we accept that nomination.
Okay, moved Frank?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, we'll show hands. I think we can do it that way. Andrea, yeah, okay, 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
And before we, before we do minutes, Lois, and public comment, do you have anything else?
No, I think that's it. But thank you.
Okay. So can we do the minutes of June 9th, public and non-public?
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
I second it.
Moved Andrea, seconded Frank. Any discussion? Hands, all those in favor? Okay. 5-0-0. That's Phil Jones, who's taking minutes down in North Carolina. And the minutes of June 23rd, public, moved?
I moved the acceptable minutes as well.
Sorry, moved Pepper, seconded Frank. All those in favor, hands? I, 5-0-0, Phil. Okay, so I know this looks like 90 simple out there. Public comment. Greg, I'm going to have you help me.
Yes, yeah, I was going to ask you, how do you want to handle it? Do you want them to type their question and I read it out? Or do you want to allow them to ask it themselves? I have a few things that I have gotten out of chat that I can address. Some weren't really, some were more comments than questions. And I can give that if you want. How do you want to handle that?
I, I don't know. I think if people, people are here, they should go online and say what they want to say.
Okay. So anybody have a question that would like to go first? I have from Sarah, forgive me if I say your name wrong, Scatamachia, who says she only received 60%. Thank you. She only received 60% of the installment made exclusively, exclusive of fundraiser, fundraised monies that were applied to her son's account. So she, when you were talking about fundraising and the trip, we also had some people say that it wasn't right if money is given back from, from the fundraiser to students. The money should go to the students in the next grade. They would love to see it go to, when a kind of high school would pay for something like a trip there or dance. It was asked if August 4th will be when it would be decided sooner. They would like to know sooner than later, and I know you changed the date to do a little sooner for them. So that kind of answered that question. There's, were a couple of people concerned about accommodations for the medically compromised kids out there? And what we do for those students who are medically compromised to get schooling. Another question was, what will you do when someone tests positive? So those are the questions I have so far. And I think we're starting to get some more people asking some things. I have one, he has his masks. Lot, I lost my internet connection, so not sure if it was further discussed. Mask use is tricky. There is no science to their need or effectiveness. So that was also mentioned.
Any other public comment? I'm giving a little longer than I usually would because.
Dwight Lynn said also, do not believe masks will be of any benefit, except maybe on school bus or for children that are health compromised. Anything else? You'd like to take yourself off of mute and give your comment yourself? Welcome to that as well.
Hi there, this is Nicole Duggan, Haley and Jackson's mom. I have a question. Are you planning on matching compromised teachers with compromised students? Or is that going to be discussed at a later date? Or will that be part of the August 4th?
I will let the superintendent try and answer.
Yeah. Hi Nicole, that's, that is a great, that's a great question. Currently, we really have to dive deeper into those plans. Because that may or that may not work. So we really need to have more specific information. And just to let you know, And just to let you know, we are working with our collective bargaining agreement on a memorandum of understanding, of agreement, to ensure that we are taking into the needs of, of their group as well. So Cole, I guess the short answer is, is that in a perfect world, if it worked, that would be great, but we know that, that may or that may not work. So we would have to look at the finer details of that, to see how that would actually line up.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Les, there was also a question asked about, but people don't feel safe about sending their children back to school yet, will there be an option for them at home? Without childcare, I'm sorry. If we do not make a decision, go back to brick and mortar, if we do make a decision, go back and mortar, will there be an at-home option for those of us without childcare issues?
I, I should think that that would be one of the items that Dr. Costa brings to us on July 28th, and she can speak to it now, or she can wait until the 28th?
Regarding the child?
If someone doesn't send their child to school, doesn't feel safe sending their child to school.
Again, I think that's something that we have to work through. The other, the other reason we have to think about is, is that there are some families that won't be able to send, or they might not be able to send their child to school because of health reasons. And we would have to then, of course, be looking at accommodations to ensure that we are meeting their academic needs. So there's, there could be a lot of factors in that one, so rather than answer that one, I'm just going to say that we obviously want to work with our families to ensure that we are giving every child, you know, the academic and social emotional learning support that they need. And every situation will be different, so it's hard to make a general statement.
Lois, there was a request for you to repeat the number of families who responded on the face requirements question on the survey, so I think they were looking to have that data repeated.
Yep, we can do that. So if you look at face masks, I think that's what I saw. It was, it looked like 4.9% are recommending face coverings. So I'm sure Greg, you could do that math for me, but it's 4.9%. And it wasn't a number for that pie chart. I could, I would guess if I'm looking-
7% wanted it required.
I'm sorry, that's right. With 7% required and 4.9 recommended, so about 12%. So about 99, right? There's 990-ish, give or take, about 100.
Greg, anything else?
I have one here, it says the school counselors' clients are, are the students, not staff. What other avenues can the school district consider using to support the staff's emotional wellbeing, so school counselors are not even more overwhelmed than they will already be? There's also a couple of requests about having masks, some back and forth discussion about masks. What would be the options for, I think we answered that. Would the district please publicly release the results of the survey? Was a request. Someone else backed the, said that was a great idea. Will all the details be explored on 7/28, or will a decision be made on 7/28, and these details discussed offline?
They should be all discussed here.
Well, it is, it's going to be, I can say that there will be a decision made on the 28th, because there needs to be a decision made on the 28th. As far as discussing these things off, online, I don't think so. Lois is going to bring us, bring us her recommendations, and we'll discuss those recommendations, and then we will, we will act on them.
Are there-
Lois?
Yeah, just one other thing, is the PTA has agreed to host a PTA meeting. If you recall, that was one of the things that the PTA did offer us to do. We can certainly listen as people want to weigh in next week as well. I'm willing to do that, to hear from people. But I think we have to make a decision in our best interest. That was one of the things that the PTA talked about, was providing another opportunity for families or parents to have a conversation about this. There's obviously great interest, and I think we could certainly listen at a PTA meeting next week as well.
There was that request, someone else also asked, Lois, that will there be a discussion with parents' input either at or before the next meeting?
That's a good idea.
Someone did miss the results of, there was a question in the survey, asking parents about the need to bus, need of bus services. Were the results of that question shared? She missed it. They were. I don't know if you plan on sharing that result on after, but they can see that if you do that. There was a question, when is the PTA meeting? That was answered, the PTA meeting's on Tuesday, 21st at 7:00 PM. And I think we're at the end of questions, I went through and read them, something just, people just replying back and forth, yes. Any other questions?
So Lois, the agenda for the 28th will simply be a discussion and action on the COVID-19 response.
Okay, great.
Okay. Frank, question?
Yeah, yeah, just two things. One, if I could make a recommendation, Lois, if you could put the results of the survey on the website, so the parents have an opportunity to look at those results. Because I saw a number of questions regarding that. And second, can we talk about the entranceway to the new SAU?
Okay, is that something you want to talk about in public or non-public?
In public.
I guess we can talk about it in non-public, though. I, I don't see a-
No, it's, that's something we talk about in public.
Okay. Right now, my understanding, after going to sign manifests at the SAU, the new SAU, that you have to enter the building via the Marston main entrance. Is that correct, Lois?
That is correct.
Based on everything that's going on, it's going to be, in the fall, if we go back to brick and mortar, there's going to be a lot of confusion with SAU business, school business. And I know in the past, before we moved, there was an entranceway that we utilized. Now I know we can't use that entranceway for whatever the reasons are, but there is a side entrance that we can use. Is that correct?
It is. Well, yes and no. The, the concern was, and I'm going to also have Keith Lassard weigh in on this, we talked about it, there was concerns around ADA compliance. Just so you know, and in terms of security.
But if the, okay, okay.
Because-
If we, if we utilize a lock system there, and cameras, we've addressed the security system. Now my question now becomes, when we redesign this thing to come back, why wasn't ADA compliance looked at?
I'm going to keep Mr. Lassard, I'm going to defer to the facilities manager for some of this, as, you know, we, we talked about it, but I think he can, he can weigh in on it as well.
Okay, so, um, um. The first question, as far as people entering the building through the front of the building, they will have to follow the same CDC guidelines as entering the SAU office, SA would for entering a school building, and so we don't want to bring any of the vid into the SAU either. We have installed a phone in the airlock that calls directly to Kathy Tuck and to Christine Sullivan, so if people need special ed folks in the admin suite there, or the SAU administration, they have ways of contacting them. They would be called, and someone would go up and greet them and bring them back. The main reason is security. Dr. Costa wanted to introduce security for everybody, all the staff in the SAU suite, as well as the Marston School Building. Before, the doors were not locked. It was a giant hole in our security system at the Marston School. So, we did have some designs done by an architect to change and modify the building. Nothing moved forward on that, as it was very expensive, and we were on budget freezes at the time for moving back. So, having a side entrance that's unmanned, we don't know who will be coming in and out of it. The front office, where Kathy Tuck sits, will also have a monitor of the airlock, so she can see the people that are out using the phone, calling the office, the SAU office as well. I don't think it was, this decision was taken very lightly. The evolution of moving into SAU 92.0, because these modifications should have, would have done, should have, could have, would have, had, should have done this, when we had the money to do it, and I don't know if we ever had the money to do the, the actual plans. But I, I will do what we can. I think what we tried to do was come up with the cost-effective way of handling what we face today.
Okay. Further discussion?
Well, I, I don't think I had my question answered. We had a separate entryway for the SAU, correct? Before we moved to Scott Road?
Yes, we did.
Then now, we consolidated that. So now what you've done is increased the traffic flow going into Marston, whether, and you have to identify whether you're going, you have business at Marston, or business at the SAU. That, to me, looks like it was poor planning, a, a lack of understanding the concept of keeping the two separate, not merging the two together. And I think in the long run, it's going to become a headache, unless we go and have a separate entryway, so people can do their business. We, we used to put packages together for families, am I correct, Lois? Now you've got them going into the Marston section?
What, what packages?
No.
68 hours.
Yes.
Well, I, I just want to say, I think it was extremely poor planning on whoever made that decision, and I don't think the board was brought into that, that was never discussed with the board. I was always under the impression that that was going to be a separate entranceway. And now you merged both entranceways. We've put more pressure on the front office. Thank you.
Frank DeLuca marked this day in history. We agree 100%, 1,000%.
Thank you.
I agree with you, it should have been discussed, it should have been done. Now we have to go and back and try it over again and see. Kathy Tuck, I believe, has enough in her job without being a door monitor, and Christine Sullivan as well. And I just think that we need to figure out a better plan, because there's going to be a time in September, we're going to be too busy at Marston School to worry about who's coming in the door for SAU 90. SAU 90 is going to be too busy worrying about who's coming in the door to deal with Marston. I think we've created a big headache, which didn't need to be created.
Well, that certainly was not the intention. We were more focused on the security of the building at the time. And those modifications to create a safer entrance were, we didn't have the money.
Andrea?
We're giving back $217,000 from the building fund.
Andrea?
The money?
I, I bet now that Keith and Lois are aware of it, that they'll work on getting that taken care of as soon as they can, and as soon as we figure out how we're going to get the kids back in school. So I'm glad you mentioned it, but I, I know that they're going to, they're going to work on it. All they needed was to be made aware, and now they have been. So off you go.
Thank you.
Can I say one thing? I can, I can tell you, yeah, thank you. First off, I, I appreciate, you know, your input, Frank, and obviously, as the former principal at Marston, that's the last thing, you know, that, that I hear where you're coming from, is I guess what I'll say. But I do know this, there's two things that were competing with each other. One, we had a security issue at Marston School when the SAU was here previous, and how it was set up. That was a concern when we had the Navy SEALs come in, that was one of the things that was brought to our attention by, by multiple groups that reviewed our safety plans and over, and right. The other thing I can tell you is that when we designed the office here, it was with the input of the people that, the, that are running the office, I guess is what I would say. And I know that Mr. Lassard, to his credit, did try to work hard with all constituents to make the best of a situation, knowing that the security down on that end of the building, where the entrance was, was of concern to many people, including, including Marston staff. So I just want to, I just want to put that out there. So I, I guess I straddle on both fences here. I think that, to Keith's point, we, we talked about if we could have a separate entrance, and then we talked about putting up doorways and putting up walls, and unfortunately, we, it was not going to be ADA compliant, because that was going to be the cheapest way to do it, believe it or not. So we, because we were thinking we could come in that door, Frank, that you were talking about, that is off the bus loop. But you would have to also put up a wall, because again, you'd be coming in, and there'd be direct access to the entire school. So you would have to put up a wall there, and by putting up a wall there, you do not have, it's not ADA compliant for anybody that would need that. So I think we, because we did, we did talk about that, just so you know, and just from both ends, as the former principal there, and who's living in it both ways now. Keith, did I-
So, this is not an agenda item, okay? It's been discussed, Frank has made you aware of his concerns, and we will leave it with you folks. And Ginny has made you aware of her concerns, we'll leave it with you folks.
Thank you.
Okay?
Les, there's been a couple of questions that came up, if you want to address those or leave them.
The last two, the last two, Greg.
Okay, so there was one that asked, what have the school board and teachers come up with, with possible options improving remote learning? What, what work is being done behind the scenes that the school is exploring to improve remote capability, also known as creative solutions, that were mentioned in general in the name of being prepared for another spike? Will need better online teaching than what was offered in the spring? And then there was another one that said, well, it was asked about, well, there's actually three, you want me to just pick the, the other one out of the two? One was just, I confirmed, it was asked about the school board meeting, it's going to be online, right? On the 28th?
Yes.
It's not happening in person? Okay. And the other question was about outdoor learning, and would there be increased security because of outdoor learning classrooms?
No.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, last question, in regards to the July 28th meeting. Okay, we should have some game plan regarding the SR- Okay, we should have some game plan regarding the SROs, because that was brought, that was mentioned at last night's selectmen meeting. You know, what are our intentions with the SROs?
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Moved Frank, seconded.
A second.
Vote by hands? Hi Ginny, yes. Frank, I'm assuming yes, because you made the motion, and Andrea, yes. Andrea, are you a yes?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yeah.
All right, and we are adjourned until July 28th at 4 o'clock.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you, I'll stop recording now.
Thank you, Greg.